Okay, well then I will, in the absence of our chairman Bob, I'll go ahead and then bring this meeting into order today between the Board of Commissioners and the School Board. Members that are here with the superintendent and I believe the finance director. We have, can the audience see this online as well? Okay, anyways, we're having this meeting today to help the Board of Commissioners have a better understanding of the capital outlays requested by the School Board so we can get a better understanding of the requests and answer questions and back and forth comments. And with that, I will guess we will kick it off with the superintendent Mark Stefanik to go ahead and start in with the capital outlays for the school requests.
Okay. Thank you Vice Chairman Payman. Good evening Commissioners. Just to let you know, we've got other folks from the district administration and we have our board chair Karen Etheridge with us. We have Sandy Reynolds, our Chief Information Officer, but for the general public you could also refer to her as the tech director. And so she's in charge of that portion of the capital outlay budget. And then online, we have Larissa York who is our finance officer. And so if you want any specifics about the capital outlay budget or the general budget document, you know, she can give those specifics to you. The capital outlay budget that you received last week from the school district, we go through a similar process every year where our department directors and our school principals put together requests for capital outlay improvements or new capital outlay equipment. Typically, we get requests in the $2 million range for the school district and we were operating off of last year's allocation of 1.4 from the Commissioners about two weeks, I think, before last week's meeting. I had a conversation with County Manager Stike Leather and he said that because of the economic situation, he would like us to take the requests down to $1 million rather than 1.4. When we looked at the original budget of 1.4, it became more and more difficult for us to cut an additional $400,000. If need be, we will, but as my cover letter to the capital outlay budget explained, if as the county finalizes its budget, if there's any more than $1 million available to the school district, we could put it to good use. Sandy, would you like to say anything about the tech listing and capital outlay before we open it up for questions?
Yes.
If you have a green light, you're good.
Okay. So originally when we met for our capital outlay request was before the COVID closures. So as everybody can imagine, things changed quite a bit during that time and the state has also given us additional requirements that we are expected to meet next year as far as remote learning days and additional access, equitable access to students, given the option of remote learning that may or may not have to occur in the future. We have been operating off of one-to-one in three through 12, but everything in the elementary school was brought down after seniors graduated. Chromebooks are expected to last five years and we were using them well past seven, 10 years. We were doing repairs in-house and paying for parts out of pocket for what we could get, but those are, those are at end of life. We can't even get repair parts anymore and they will no longer update. So we were pretty much at a place where we needed to replace at least four or five before COVID happened and then when COVID happened, we saw a greater need. We have quite a few students in our district who do not have equal access, who do not have devices at home if we don't provide something, who do not have internet access. And we've been doing everything we can over the past 10 weeks to try and meet some of those needs, especially in the elementary school, because they, they were coming at a disadvantage right from the beginning in the middle of March.
And just for the Commissioners' information and the community at large, we've been trying to access hotspots from various companies or agencies and appreciative to County Manager Stike Leather, we've got a box of, I think, six to eight hotspots from the county and so we distributed those to needy households. We're also trying to get internet access through internet providers and we've had a lot of offers, but we're investigating the offers, making sure that, that they're the best deal that we can get in these, in these economic times and, and looking for some shared responsibility in the expense between the school district and the agency who's offering the services. So as we continue to go forward, we're going to try to find ways to ensure, if it's possible, that everybody has access to an internet signal and everybody has a device so they can participate in the online activities provided by the school district.
Renee Doughty was able to work with some community partners and get some donations for part of the order for 200 additional hotspots through Sprint. They weren't part of our 1 million grant, which we have had for the last several years at the high school level. They have agreed to expand our service, but that won't start until next school year. So we should be receiving some additional, at no cost to us, devices that are Sipit compliant that we can give to students. The devices that we were grateful enough that we were able to borrow from here were for staff members. We were fairly surprised at the number of staff members who either because of geography or whatever other reason did not have internet access at home, therefore they could not supply remote instruction from their house. So we were able to let those be borrowed out for that, so we're grateful for it. Otherwise, we have definitely looked for other sources of funding because we're tier three, we're limited in the number of grants we can apply for, but I did just apply for $200,000 of E-rate funding for replacement switches that are desperately needed. We're waiting to hear whether that's been approved. We'll get partial funding from the FCC and partial funding from the state. We do the same thing every year for internet funding. That has already been approved and I got my award letter for that this past week. We are also in the process of writing a grant for digital learning initiatives for an implementation grant, but those funds, as with most grant sources, are very restricted in what they can, it can't be used for certain categories, but it should be $75,000 for two years, which would be $150,000 that we could use for professional development, part for some equipment and things like that, but we won't find out about that until the fall.
You want to describe how you expanded the signal at the school sites so people can access internet from the parking lots?
We also, because of the need, we expanded the signal through eight of the buildings and added a guest network so that if parents did need to come to the parking lots, they could get their student online. There were two buildings, Jarvisburg and Shawboro, that the construction impeded the signal, so we had to pay out of capital outlay for external wireless access points for those two sites and that have, those have already been installed and are up and running. Is there anything else I left off?
That's it. So as we move forward, the technology piece is, is critical in our, our capital outlay budget and so that's why Sandy was here. Mr. Mullins, our maintenance director, wasn't available this evening, but if you have questions about other items in capital outlay, we'll try to answer those in his absence.
Any other questions from the board on technical?
We are submitting applications under the CARE Act to see if we can recoup funds. Those applications are in process and we're hoping to be able to recoup some of the funds that we'll be able, and Larissa can probably speak more to that than me, whether some of those funds can be submitted back to our county so that we can recoup some of what we spent out in the last 10 weeks to try and meet some of the more pressing needs that we still have, that we're unable to meet right now.
Larissa, you want to speak to a little bit of that, some of the coronavirus funding that we received and what it can be used for?
Okay, so so far to date, we've received additional monies from the state that can be used for anything coronavirus related, from school nutrition, paid school nutrition, to fund food for school nutrition, we can use it for transportation, we could use it for any IT costs that we had, remote learning costs that we had, but the amount that we received from the state was $121,000, so that's not going to go very far. The next piece of money that we will be receiving hopefully by year end, that I can move some of our expenses, so that I can repay some of our expenses that we've had this year, is from the K-12, the CARES Act, K-12 Emergency Relief Fund. We will be receiving $457,692 and that will be available for our use until September 30th, 2021. I would like to use some of it now because we're in the hole now. That's why I'm waiting for it to hit, but it hasn't hit yet. So if it doesn't hit by year end, all I have to use is that $121,000 from the state. As far as I know, those are the only two extra funding pieces that we'll be receiving due to COVID-19.
How much, can we ask, how much, I mean, how much, I mean ballpark, just curiosity, like funds were saved in fuel from, and I mean, I know fuel costs are down super right now anyway, bus maintenance or whatever for that 10 to 12 weeks for, for fuel and maybe bus maintenance because you weren't driving nearly as much. I mean, do y'all have a number on that?
Larissa, have you had any updates from maintenance on any types of bus maintenance savings? We are using...
Yes, we don't have any from maintenance because we're still paying full electricity bills, we're still paying full sewage bills, we're still paying all of our full amounts for all of our buildings, we're still paying full payroll for everyone. So there have been no savings whatsoever in, from that, from that area. The buses are still being used for, to deliver the meals for child nutrition, we're still having to repair them, having to have people drive them. There's been no savings in that respect.
That, I'm sorry, that doesn't make any sense to me.
There, there, there might be some fuel saving. We're using about a third of the fleet, you know, for the lunch deliveries is what we're doing right now.
Okay, but you know, buses are on the road all day long during the school year.
Right.
That's wear and tear, that's tires, that's oil changes, that's all of that to suggest there's no cost savings. I, that, there is a cost savings.
Yeah.
It might not be a lot, but it might, I'm just...
Yeah.
There's no savings in that respect, but not, not when you're talking about, you know, all of our utility payments and all of our payroll payments, all of our, all of our people are still being paid.
The personnel is understandable.
They're still needing maintained.
Yeah, I think what they're specifically asking about is fuel cost, Larissa, and I know maintenance for the, the buses in general, and I know we, we touched on that the other day at our meeting concerning the price of diesel fuel and with it being low and we have, you know, filled up all of our tanks because it is so low. So we took advantage of, of the low price for diesel fuel and they are at capacity with our fuel tanks. But I, I know where Mr. Beaumont's going with that question. When you look at the buses being on the road on a daily basis, morning and some at noon and the evening versus child nutrition and making the rounds for feeding the kids in the community, I think that, that's what he's thinking is there's got to be some kind of significant savings with, with that in general.
They go to one spot. I mean, there's what, 11?
I wouldn't classify it as significant.
I wouldn't say insignificant, I just was curious on, I mean, like I said, if you did 50 less oil changes in the diesel buses, probably $150 a bus, it's $7,500. I, I've just, I mean, I didn't know if there was an exact number and I wasn't trying to be difficult, I just was, you know...
I'm sorry, I, I don't have that number.
Okay. Maybe we could research that a little bit and get the information to them. Maybe we could get an update as far as that's concerning and get that information out to the Commissioners.
And also, there wasn't any saving in utilities in the buildings?
Has to be. Probably not a lot, it's still, all the stuff's still running.
Yeah, because we, we still have a lot of our staff in the building, so we like to keep the utilities on and the heat or AC.
The water bill, bill might have been down a little bit, I mean, but...
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about the capital outlay budget?
Yes.
I know our county manager, Mr. Stike Leather, asked you to cut it to $1,025,000. So, and you said earlier, Mr. Stefanik, that, that could be done. And the capital outlays, what would you cut? Would you cut the $24,000 for playground mulch, for example? The wrestling mats? If, if, if you have to make budget cuts, which we've, we've done that in every department, it's because we're projecting, correct me if I'm wrong, 25, or 50% less sales tax, occupancy tax down by 40%. So if, if it comes down to cutting the budget, which we've had to do in all parts of our county budget, what would you cut out of that capital outlays bill, budget that you have given us?
You touched on a few of them. The wrestling mats at one time, the wrestling mats at one time were, you know, on the list, but the wrestling mats again have exceeded their, their life expectancy or their, or their warranty, you know, time, and so that's why they, they were put back in, but they were one of the items that was on the, the extra cut list. Playground mulch, not...
State requirements on that stuff too, when you have play, because I've done, my company's done for like churches and stuff like that, there's required...
For safety.
Levels for safety, I mean, and I would, I mean, and playground mulch is expensive, whether it's rubber or if it's...
Right, that, that one might be one that we could put on hold to see what school's going to look like. Well, no, it's about what school's going to look like in the fall.
And that, I think that's my concern.
Yeah, if there was a delayed opening, then we wouldn't have to have that expense right away, but as soon as we got word that schools were going to open, we had to maintain the, the safety pad, you know, underneath all the playground equipment. The playground equipment at Central Elementary was, was looked at as a possible, a reduction, but when we look at the playground pieces at each of the schools, Central Elementary's pieces need an, need an upgrade, and again, that's for, that's for safety reasons and, and how long the pieces have been there. But that's another one that was on the additional cut list. So we looked at trying to get it down and then we actually had some technology items, but that raised the biggest concern because we see the, the need for technology and the use of technology probably going up rather than being cut back. And as Ms. Reynolds stated, we've got a new state mandate for our calendar and even if we go back to typical school or as close to typical school as we can get it in, in August, there is a new state mandate that says we have to put in five days that are declared as remote learning days. So regardless of what teacher you are, you're going to prepare remote lessons so that as educators, we get more experience with how to get to the best practice level with remote lessons and remote learning. So there'll be days off of school that'll be declared as remote days and the kids are not in school, but they'll have assignments that they have to complete on their, on their devices. And so that's an extra piece. And so as a school district, we have to work with our families to make sure everybody can access those remote activities in order to be equitable.
You said, so that's five days the state's making them do? Additional, so I mean, it's not, basically a day of school, but it's a day of school from home?
Yes, yes.
So is that, will that be what drives, if you're, if you're to trim your capital outlay budget, is that what will drive what you trim is technology instead of traditional items?
I, I wouldn't put it that way. I just say we, we can't do a lot of reduction in technology because we have to go from where we are and we have to move the technology capacity forward and so we won't be able to, you know, make the cuts there. We probably have to make the cuts in, in some of these building maintenance, you know, types of items first.
To follow up on what Commissioner Jarvis has said, what are absolute needs in this budget, capital outlays, and what are wants? And I, you know, I look at like Moyoc Middle School, noise reduction panels for the cafeteria.
Oh, it's loud in there. I go in there all the time, it's so loud in there.
But how long has the school been there?
It's so loud.
That that issue's been there and like Currytuck Middle School, it says additional masonry repairs. Why was that not caught last summer when we had the big issue with the wall and done at that time? That's two things.
All right, the, the noise reduction pieces, there's been a lot of attention given to that over the years, that cafeterias, just because of the number of people there and the number of hard surfaces in cafeterias that even when students are being appropriate, as we say in elementary schools with their inside voices, just by sheer fact that there's, you know, probably 200 kids, you know, in the cafeteria at one time, you, you get that noise level and there's been some studies done about the, the decibel level that, you know, occurs in cafeterias and, and for schools to try to address that to bring it down. You know, again, those could be items, but again, at $4,500 to get to an additional $400,000, you're going to have to look at a lot of items being cut out of the budget. And so what we looked at is we looked at items that we could cut that were higher dollar numbers so that we could, we could respond to most of the requests from the buildings and still meet the, the reduction of the $400,000.
Can I ask about the track? I, I saw that the track needs to be resurfaced, recoded, and that was $195,000. I know the track's not in great shape. Is that something that could be delayed a year or is that something that is a need, as Owen put it?
The, the, the track and the condition it is right now is, is not usable for competition. And if we would get back to competitions occurring as, as usual by next spring, if we did not do something with the track, we wouldn't be able to host any, any track activities here.
Would you have been able to do that this year?
No, that's why when you say, could you put it off a year, in my opinion, it's probably been...
There weren't any home track meets this year, is, is that because of the condition of the track? Okay.
Yes.
Have there been?
Yeah, so again, when you say, could you put it off a year, in my opinion, it probably already has been put off a year. And it's, again, it's, tracks, there is a deterioration level for tracks, but at the same time, not saying that they're not important activities, but when floats and things like that, for things like homecoming come across the track, that doesn't help the longevity of the track surface. And so we talked about when the track is resurfaced and brought to, you know, the, a good standard level, that there might be a, a good investment in, in some covering that if you do those special activities and you have vehicles or, or trailers or, or different types of shoes that aren't track racing type shoes or training shoes, that you can put a covering over the, the track and protect it and, and help it last a little bit longer.
The question I'm looking at the budget, Mr. Stefanik, is with the capital projects you have listed, the school does, are there any of them or can this be in some way like maybe the first half of the school year versus the second half need? And the reason why I'm asking that is we've asked everybody to cut back our departments and everyone with the first part of this budget, hopefully that we can reassess this to December to see where we're at. We might be in a better financial situation than we feel. If we are, then we can look at some different things, but going forward, what, what's the most important things at the beginning that, that really need to be addressed, like the safety issues possibly versus something that could be put off maybe later? Let's reassess what's going on, let's see where we're at financially with the county. Maybe we can come back and say, okay, look, we can add this maybe or this, but what's the most important, I think would be kind of important to us to, what you need to get, get the school year started? I don't know if it's all these projects at once or...
Well, no, and, and the way these set up typically is, is all these projects don't get addressed at once.
Okay.
They, they show up, you know, and, and you know, being an HVAC, everything shows up on a, on a repair schedule or replacement schedule.
Yeah, usually your HVAC, you wait till the end of the school year anyway.
Right, right.
So that wouldn't be upfront, so you've got listed a, a large amount for air handlers and whatnot.
Yes.
That probably wouldn't be needed until like next summer.
Right, we could, yeah.
So that's something that could be looked at later on or, you know, so, so that could, to me, that's a big cut right there because going to school, you're not going to need that right away.
Right, and, and there's some other things too that naturally get addressed during non-school times. So typically, summer vacations, Christmas vacation, spring break, when the schools are naturally closed, things can be taken care of then. And so, you know, after we check with the, the maintenance director, he could say, these can be put off until spring break, these can be put off until...
I think that would be a significant cut to start off right, right away with, not, not that they're not important, but to get to that 1 million.
Well, what we have been forced to do...
Right.
Is we made the cuts. We've committed as a board to, in January, December, as we're getting towards the end of the year, when we have the statistics in as to how we did from a sales tax, have the opportunity to add things back into the budget, but we're forced to go into it with it's not coming back.
Correct.
We will be pleasantly surprised to add things, but we got to plan for the worst-case scenario. When looking at this budget, we, and I think the county manager sent, you know, mentioned, any increase in this budget, there is nowhere in the county to take it out of, other than fund balance. That is the only place we can take it out of. And that's right now as it sits, we have firefighters who are not being paid what really they should be getting paid. There is a whole mess of county employees that are not getting paid what they should be getting paid. There is a COLA that we, as of right now, that COLA has been eliminated from people, from all county employees that were told they were going to get that. We, we do, we do not have the money. And, you know, we've all suffered the complaints about getting this county opening, getting businesses open, getting, you know, getting our visitors in. And, and the accusation has been, all we care is, all we care about is the money. Well, this is the, number one, that's a blatantly false statement. We care about the, the county, but this is the results of what we get when we don't have this over here, you know? So we're trying to manage a budget and, you know, and I, at the end of the day, you know, I'm going to implore you, figure out for a budget perspective, how you're going to get to 1,025. I, I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate for us to tell you what, you know, you can't get the stop clock, you can't, I, I don't think that's appropriate, but I don't think, you know, I, we don't have the money.
Yeah, I think we're all struggling and we're in the same boat as far as that's concerned and it seems like every year, we put off things and we say, well, maybe next year, maybe, maybe a couple of years down the road, and we go back to the funding formula. Last year when we got together and we discussed the per pupil funding and the funding formula that the Evergreen Report recommended that we, that we update, we were hoping that that would be the case for additional funds for the school system. Of course, that, that hasn't happened and we, we've been scraping, you know, whatever we can do to save money, we've been doing it and I realize you all are in the same boat that we are, where we have to, we have to cut where we can, but I don't, I don't know where we're going to take it from. We can, we can definitely make these cuts, but the, but the schools are going to suffer, you know, when it comes to different things, you know, having to do with the foundation or the brick or, you know, water seepage or anything like that, that has to be taken care of. Then when you think about the safety... Then when you think about the safety for our students, such as the mulch, or if you've been to Central Elementary and you've, you've looked at that playground, that's dear to my heart, just because two of my grandkids are there and they don't have a playground to play on. The equipment is not safe. So, some of these things that may look like they're expenditures that are wish lists, they're by no means a wish list. There, there's some important things on here that, that I feel like we really, we really need. We're in the process of building a new school. We're going to need current expense funding for this purpose. It's not only one school we're looking at. As you know, it's probably going to be two or three because, just because of the new subdivisions that have been approved in the county and older subdivisions that were platted that now they're building on before COVID-19 and the economy, the economy was booming. So, I just ask that you take, take into account, you know, what we're going through too and see if there's any way we could make this work, even if it's in two, two payments, two stages. Say if, you know, seven, 700 was agreed upon tonight and approved and the additional 700 at a later date, that would even give us, give us hope that some of these things are-
You're going to get your $1,025,000.
One, what? Okay.
There's not a 700. We're not-
Cutting it.
$1,025 is right now what you have.
When do you think we could readdress the additional funding?
December.
After December when we-
This board is committing that-
December.
Because we have to look at all things in the county and see what we can, I mean, it, we may have indications sooner that, that paint a brighter light. But our governor didn't help us all at all with what he announced today. And that's another discussion that this board has to have because he's saying five more weeks.
Right.
Five more weeks will be death to many businesses in this county.
I know, I know.
And our sales-
What do you think of the per pupil funding? Where, where are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think that the, the benefit of the minimum CPI helped you out this year because we guaranteed a minimum 2.0.
2%.
Right.
And it was actually like 1.8.
1.8, yeah.
So, so that definitely played in your favor this because we guaranteed a minimum.
Yes.
So, that, that helped you there. But going back to Paul's point there, I think our sales, correct from wrong, but our sales usually lags behind and we won't get a real good picture-
Three months.
Till about December. And that's why we're committed to let's see where we're at. And then, like Commissioner Beaumont said, we're going to assess everybody's budgets again and see where we're at and see what we can't start trickling in, which, you know, we're not saying it won't happen, but we got to, we got to see what we're at.
So, what you'd like to see us do is, is cut-
Commit to the $1,025,000 right now.
And then cut that for now, but reevaluate it.
We're going to reevaluate the whole budget.
I would prioritize, if we get 100 grand more, this is what we got to do.
Okay.
And, and-
Oh, no. We, we're hoping that we're going to be better off than we're thinking.
Yes.
And that we can get all departments to start trickling some funds back in. But like I said, we can't guarantee the full 400,000, but-
But to address the, the facilities, give you an example, the Judicial Center in the next three years needs about 1.4 million dollars. So, we completely understand-
Right.
Facilities.
Yes. And we have, you know, a lot of the schools are older schools and they're harder to maintain and keep up, as you know, you know, they've, they've got some age on them. So, we're working to try to keep those in tip-top shape. And we're proud of our schools. When you go to other districts and, and you come home and you look at what we have, very proud of our, our schools and we're proud of all the county. Gosh, when you, when you go to the, the ballparks and see what the county's done, we've, we've done a really good job and I applaud you all for that. So, I enjoy working together and I just hope that we can, we can come together and, and fill some of these needs that, that definitely need to be met.
When you bid big projects or when you're looking at these costs that you're putting in, and I'll just use this one, $994,000, no, I'm sorry.
I was going to say-
$300,000 for-
We're not paying 994 for anything except maybe a new building, but right now.
HVAC units at Griggs. What's your process to get these prices? How are, are you bidding, putting it out for bids? Do you get local contractors to bid on it or are we using out-of-county people who are the larger corporations that do that work?
A little bit of both, Commissioner. We, we call around to try to get rates and then we use the, the estimates that we have for this document. And then when we actually get around to doing the project, then we go and, and bid it out and try to get the, the lowest bid price for it. Some of the, some of the amounts don't warrant us to go through what you would call a formal bid process that you'll see when the new school operation begins. But we do go out and get at least three estimates on every project to see how low we can get the price. And just to be transparent, some of these numbers, you know, have a little bit, you know, of, of a contingency percentage in them, just in case we can't get, you know, if we talk to somebody in the spring and then as Commissioner Payment was talking about, then we go to actually look for the job to be done next spring. It might not match the number that's in the document that we give you today because the, the prices go up. But we've got a pretty good relationship with a lot of area companies and, and they'll try to hold the prices for us, uh, once they've given it to us. If we have to delay a project, they'll try to hold the cost.
Do you think it would be prudent to consider do, with times like they are, to do a formal bid process on each project since we are looking out next summer on some of them, the HVAC units being, coming in? And do something like that when you do it, a formal process?
We, we could do that. We, we just finished a, a formal process, a bid process in an area where we typically just did quotes and, and we did not have a significant difference in the contracts after going through the bid process. But we could try it on some of these bigger, you know, $100,000 or more, you know, contracts. We could try it on those and see if it would make an impact.
Do, um, do y'all use something? And I know like a lot of your guys, I mean, y'all got some phenomenal guys in your maintenance. Matt Mullins has some great guys that work in there. I constantly see him working on some of the schools. Do y'all do some of the install stuff y'all self? Because I know you've got a bunch of HVAC guys. I mean, I'm just, that's a cost savings if you're paying a guy $20 an hour or whatever, you know, just compared to Joe Schmo's company coming in church and sending it back.
Right. Yeah, yeah, we do. That's actually going to happen. It's a shared process. The, one of the more recent things we have are the mobile classrooms coming in. There's going to be some of the things done by the contractor and then some of the other pieces are going to be done by our maintenance department to save some costs.
Because y'all do have a lot of, I mean, there's, they do a good job.
Yeah.
You got a lot of good-
Matt Mullins, he realizes the financial crunch that we're in and he does a great job.
He's got good people.
Trying to do a lot of the things in-house. Some things he can and of course, some things he can't. But he's always looking out for, for the school's best interest.
Right. And what Commissioner Payment said about, you know, possibly pushing some things to later on in the year, what that'll do is our maintenance department then will, you know, do what their, their title says. They'll, they'll maintain the, the current systems until we get to the point of actually having a contract to replace some of the, the items.
Well, and that goes back to, you know, when you're, when that $1,025,000, you know, do the important stuff you need and the safety stuff and-
Right.
Let's see how December looks. And then that's a summertime project anyways.
Right, exactly.
So, use that money what you need to upfront. That, that's a big saving. I mean, when you're projecting what needs to be done right away, that cuts that down to close to a million right there.
Right. That's why, that's a piece we were just doing in, in there, out of there. So, if we actually, actually looked at, you know, they would show up on a, a list that would be considered at a later time, possibly inside the school year. You're right, that'll help us trim it back.
Is there any concern? I, I know you, on your, the draft budget, you've got the, broken down by state public funds and then federal funds. Is there any concern that those funds might be reduced?
Massive, massive concern, yes.
If, if there is, how would you make up that? Would you have to dip into a fund balance? What, what is your fund balance?
Fun balance is, is sitting at just a little bit over $400,000. And again, I, I think we've had this discussion before, that's, that number is, is well below my comfort level for a $45 million operation. And so, we've, the budget that you have, the draft budget that's out there, not a penny, you know, from the fund balance right now is in that budget. We, we did it to, to hold the, the fund balance firm, but, it's been a while since I wrote the cover letter. But the, the state has decided that the, the sequenced implementation of the K through three class sizes is going to continue, even in this economic environment. So, there, one of the houses, I think it was the House, suggested that we put it on hold for a year and then the state wouldn't have to allocate any other funding for specials teachers, PE, music and art teachers. That's combined with the, the sequenced implementation of K through three, but they're going forward with that. And so, our estimation said that we could have anywhere from four to six new primary teachers based on enrollment projections. If that's the case, we'd have to look at the additional percentage we would get for PE, music and art teachers and see if those numbers match. Otherwise, if they don't, that's going to be an additional draw off of the, the local funds. In addition, special education, if somebody moves into the district that has a new need for services or if they move in and they go past maximum headcount numbers, that triggers a mandatory increase in, in teaching staff as well. And/or sometimes teacher assistant staff. But aside from those two things, we, we did not move forward with any other increases in staff or programs because we're trying to stick with what we have. When you talked about the state and federal budgets, we got a planning budget back in February and it's changed at least once, if not twice already, in the wrong direction as far as we're concerned. And so, it's less than what the projections were in, in February and March. And federal, and Larissa, you can jump in and tell me if, if you've heard anything since, but we didn't have any, any planning type of allotment from the federal government yet. And so, we're just going off of the numbers that we have for this year and trying to see how that fits into our budget. So.
How does, can I, how does that work? And, you know, the, like the out of, like if you got to, for somebody with a special situation, you, you know, I know we have some that have to, we take to different places.
Yes.
Just, do we still have to pay those, those places even though they're, like they're not physically going?
Well, what, what we did this year is we set up our payment to those facilities the same way that we set up our operations here. If they were able to maintain remote services and continue to service our students, then the contract stayed intact.
That is what-
And that's, that's law. Whatever you do for a typically educated student, you have to keep the same provisions in place for a special needs student.
And I just was curious.
Yeah. Some of our other contracts, we were able to modify the contracts because they weren't able to continue doing what they do remotely. And so, if they couldn't prove that they could provide the same services, then we, you know, stop payment on contracts for the months of April and May. So, we're allowed to have a little bit of a cost savings in, on those types of contracts.
Well, I'm like Commissioner Beaumont. When you make these cuts, you need to make them with the understanding and the mindset that you might not get any more money. Because we just do not know what the economy holds for us and-
Right. We understand that. We understand that. And one last piece to Ms. Jarvis's comment, you know, what happens if all three legs of our funding stool, you know, can't match up to what our expected allocations are? Then as a district, we have to look for where reductions happen. And so, nobody likes to talk about this because it gives you a bad feeling in your stomach. But you look at, you know, possible programs that you have to stop, possible layoffs that may have to happen in order to make the budget work. And because we don't have that much of a fund balance, those types of discussions will be sooner rather than later if our federal, state money can't meet expectations.
I'm not asking you to cut anything, but when I was looking over the budget and I saw the cost for the zone flashing lights, DOT doesn't pay for that? The schools have to pay for it?
I, I think maintenance is our responsibility, yeah. If, I, I think-
For a new flashing replacement, $19,400?
It's in the school zones. Yeah, they have to pay for it.
I would think the-
They maintain, I know, I know y'all maintain them because when one's not working, when I'm working the shares department, I call Matt. And I will say, I mean, like I said, his staff and Matt, I'll call on one and the next morning, because we're making you more money by, by giving them some, some paper. But they, I mean, they're back up and running 24 hours at the worst. So, kudos to those guys.
Well, this is for replacement. And what's a technology truck?
It's, you, you talk to it.
A staff of six men covering all of our device repair and replacement. We have vans for five of those, well, four, one of, one person works remotely. We do not have a vehicle for the other person to go from school to school to school. That person is currently using their own vehicle and turning in mileage, which is extent, can be extensive cost.
I think this was $34,000.
That's just a full-size van.
Yeah. If, if, what you would know from the, the business sector, if you've ever seen the, I think Best Buy, is it the Geek Squad? The, the little vans that say Geek Squad on the side, that's what it is for our district. It's just a, a van with equipment in it and, and parts that they would drive around. And so, instead of doing mileage reimbursement at the IRS rate, it would be a, a district-owned vehicle.
And right now, what we're having to do is borrow from Mr. Mullins when we can and we sometimes need a flatbed truck as opposed to a van because we can't get a pallet in a van with the tool racks inside. And so, it would be beneficial for us to be able to have at least one flatbed truck to do what we need to do and not have to try to coordinate with his staff to be able to borrow that and then not reimburse, not reimburse the technician. I'm sorry.
Why not a trailer?
A trailer?
Like an enclosed trailer?
Yeah, enclosed trailer.
Or a flatbed.
We still have to have the vehicle to pull it. Otherwise, we're still reimbursing the, the staff member, but I do understand what you're saying.
I mean, if you bought a flatbed truck, is it going to be utilized five days a week or is it going to sit still for three?
Our guys are running every day.
With a flatbed?
The person that I'm speaking of doesn't have anything to use, so, yeah.
We understand that.
It would be easy every day.
But a flatbed, we would consider a fairly specialized piece of equipment that cost-benefit analysis, if it's not rolling five days a week-
I understand.
You can get by with a flatbed trailer, which does everything a, a flatbed truck does, but it's still a van Monday through Friday when, anyway.
That would be two, two pieces of equipment? I'm sorry, I misunderstand. But anyway, we, we fully expected that was going to be cut and that he was just going to have to continue to turn in mileage and-
I think they misunderstood the, what, what you were saying, Sandy. The, the fifth one is a need because they're using their personal vehicles, not just because we need a flatbed.
Not in addition.
It would, a flatbed would be in addition to another vehicle. You know, if, if they needed that.
That's what I understood.
We don't need a flatbed. We, we just need another vehicle. Yeah.
So, it's just one more vehicle needed as well?
Right, right. We don't, yeah.
Because I know Charles Pecel drives his own truck everywhere.
That's right, yes.
I wasn't going to call him out, but yes, that's who it is.
That's fine. I went to high school with him. I mean, he drives everywhere.
Yeah. And see, we're paying more for his mileage reimbursement, the federal level, instead of it being owned by-
He's about to lose money.
The county, yeah, we're losing money.
It'll be bad for parents.
But his car will last longer.
Any other questions you have?
When, when we looked at that, just as we looked at vehicles, when we looked at that, our professional development fleet of vehicles for teachers that have to go between here in Raleigh or here in Charlotte, we pulled all those off before we pulled that one off. But if that would have to be another reduction, we would just continue, you know, with the IRS reimbursement until we had the funds to get the new vehicle.
Do we ever send vehicles from the county fleet to the school system?
By the time a vehicle comes out of the county fleet, it is essentially scrapped. I mean, we, we get the good-
It's going to be given to the fire departments all the time.
We get the good out of, out of most of our vehicles, if not a lot of them. We've had, we've got several that are 15, 20 years old that are still-
Still running.
Yeah. And we, and which is one of the reasons that we put off all capital purchases for vehicles. We, I mean, I'm a firm- I mean, I'm a firm believer that you evaluate each vehicle on its own merits instead of just saying, "Well, at the end of life, we just get rid of it." Because some vehicles last fifteen years and they're old and some vehicles last five.
And it's not you driving them.
Or if a tree hits, there's no...
Well, we're, and we're, speaking of our vehicles, if you want to talk about that, that's what we're doing. We've got ones that are fifteen plus that are out there and they're at the mileage level that we say only local travel. And the new ones that come in, then they're, then teachers that have a professional development workshop or even students that, you know, have some type of competition that they have to go to, they get the newer ones if they're heading to Charlotte or Raleigh or Durham, you know, or whatever. But we've got several out there that have many hundreds of thousands of miles on them and they've been around at least a decade and a half and you know which ones those are, you've seen them.
Does any of the board members have any other questions for the...
I just have one more and just make sure I'm clear. So on your draft budget, the numbers for the state funds and the federal funds are based on what you had this past year? Is that correct? Am I right in asking that question?
That's a good question. Larissa, you want to speak to that?
Yes, yes, sir. So the state section is based on the allotment formulas for each PRC that they give us. These are allotment formulas from the eighteen, nineteen school year. Since we do not have a state budget, we'd have to go back to the eighteen, nineteen school year and use those formulas based on our ADM and other, there's, almost every PRC has a different formula, so that was my best guess of what our initial allotment would be. I haven't gotten an initial allotment, usually by now I have it. Everybody's so discombobulated that all we can do is guess right now because we're not getting it much from the state. As for federal, federal hasn't gotten us anything for months. So I used exactly the same initial allotment as we got last year for federal numbers. Those are the exact same federal numbers that we had at the beginning of last school year.
Okay.
Which would be the school year, nineteen, twenty.
So you use the same ADM from last school year?
No, no. So our ADM, they did give us that. We have our ADM that they're projecting is four thousand three hundred thirty-two. Last year it was, I'm sorry, this school year, it was four thousand one hundred thirty-four.
So we do have increased, you use the same formula with the increased number of students?
That's correct.
Now, what we have to wait for, as we did this year, when they did not sign the budget at the state level, we have to wait to see whether or not they're going to give us the increase in student ADM, you know, in addition to the eighteen, nineteen budget. So we had to wait for special information on whether or not we could expect additional money for the additional students. And so we're still without that budget. I know the county, you know, has, well, we all do, have some interest in the capital funds that are associated with that budget and, but the school potentially could open in August if there are no signatures on that document, that we would still be operating off of eighteen, nineteen funds. And that does not include non-recurring funds. Well, and it may or may not include the ADM, but it doesn't include non-recurring funds until they send us another communique that says you can add in this non-recurring fund, this can go in. So if I was a betting person, I would say that we didn't, we never reached full eighteen, nineteen allocation this year because some of the non-recurring funds never, never came back, so.
And as I understand it, we're only missing one signature, right?
I don't know that.
First of all, one is...
Any other questions, board members? Okay, well, then I'm just going to, in summary, the county, we would just ask the school system to understand that the county is going to approve the one million twenty-five thousand to get the school year started. And when we meet in December to reassess where we're at, the county would contact the school at that point, let us know financially, you know, where we're at and if we can come back and have some more discussions then going forward to that. So we just ask the school to understand, you know, the situation the county is in, but we are going to allocate those funds, they'll be there for you. And hopefully, all departments in this county as a whole, we can, the one million twenty-five thousand is what I was referring to.
Thank you for that clarification.
Excuse me. Yeah, well, that's what I was referring to, but hopefully all the departments, you know, we can sit down and say, "Hey, we're financially better than we hoped," but that's not a guarantee. We hope we have a strong summer, we hope this economy turns around and hopefully the state of North Carolina and particularly the one signature person lets us turn this economy around quicker than we would like.
I'm going to hold my breath.
And I'd like to...
And with tourism.
Well...
I seen a lot of cars on the road last weekend.
If they're purchasing, if they're buying now, we see the traffic on it, let's hope that they're helping to come.
That's part of the problem. Until the restaurants get open, until some of the other things get open, you know, it's camping in the backyard except they're at a rental house. So we'll see those sales, we'll see that sales tax and from the grocery stores and stuff.
From the grocery stores and they said like Home Depot and Lowe's, they're all...
So that's what we're hoping for.
Don't have either of those.
I mean, I mean, for DARE.
Or Walmart either.
Right.
But no, yeah.
But I do want to thank the school board chair, Etheridge, and superintendent, Stefanik, and the school staff for being here and the board of commissioners. I know. That's why I said school board chair. But, and our county manager, everybody being here to discuss these, I know it's important.
Risking your life.
And it's an important topic every year and the county wants to do everything they can, so just be assured we're doing our due diligence and hopefully we can sit down again and have some positive answers.
Sounds good.
All right, with that, I guess I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
You'll need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.